Welcome, everybody. I want to call the meeting to order. City Clerk, roll call.
Morris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams. Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Mayor Barnes.
Mayor Barnes.
Here. Awesome. And tonight, I'd like everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would love it if Shadow Gentry would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
All right, public participation. Tonight, I have J.J. Wet would like to come and address council. Yeah, we can remove the microphone. Perfect.
Yep, there we go. All right. As some of you know, July is actually Disability Pride Month. It's a little different than Disability Awareness Month in the fact that we want to celebrate disability. It really showcases disability in our population. And so with that said, with my appointment to the HRC tonight, I think that is a great way to do it. And I really want to thank Mayor Barnes and the rest of city council for doing so and making DeKalb a more equitable place for people with disabilities.
Thank you, J.J. All right. Let's see here. Presentations. I have a proclamation that I want to read. It's declaring June 19th, a day to commemorate and end the end of slavery in the United States and a day of racial reconciliation and healing in the city of DeKalb. So the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the President and Congress of the United States have declared a national holiday to commemorate the day, June 19th, 1865, when Union General Gordon Granger and a contingent of Union soldiers brought news of emancipation to Galveston, Texas. And whereas, the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act of June 17th, 2021 amends the federal code to establish a paid holiday for all federal workers on Juneteenth Independence Day. And whereas, the city of DeKalb wishes to join the national government in setting aside a day of the commemoration of liberty and equality for all citizens. And whereas, the mayor and city councils support the DeKalb community's participation in the national conversation focusing on continuing obstacles to racial equity and social justice. And whereas, by embracing Juneteenth as a holiday, we encourage community reflection about what unites us and can promote racial understanding and healing. Therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth Day every year in the city of DeKalb and encourage city employees and all citizens to actively participate in dialogue and community events to promote the culture and belonging that was General Granger's aspiration 156 years ago. Nice. I love signing these. All right, appointments. So I have three appointments tonight before council. I have the appointment of Joe Gastiger as Chair of the Human Relations Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2023. I also have the appointment of J.J. Wet to the Human Relations Commission for the completion of a three-year term through December 31st, 2024. You're in it for the long haul, J.J. And appointment of Shannon Stoker to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the completion of a five-year term through December 31st, 2026. I would take a motion, if you don't mind, in omnibus fashion or omnibus form, to approve all three of these at once.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. Awesome. All right, we have item G, Consent Agenda, item number one. Accounts payable in payroll through July 12th, 2021 in the amount of $2,110,371. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. All right, moving on to item H, Public Hearings. So the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAAPER, for program year 2020, April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. I would open this hearing, it looks like, at 6:06, and I'd ask if there's anyone present wishing to speak? Not seeing anything. City Manager, do you have anything to add?
Just to say that this is an opportunity for people to review and also to speak, if they wish, to the report that has been, in a provisional way, made available to the public for the last 15 days. And that is the executive summary for, and the acronym here is CAAPER, which is Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and also our actual action plan for our Community Development Block Grant program. This is an important federally funded program that provides service to many underserved people in our community, but also agencies that serve the same. And the expenditures for this program have to be detailed and made available for the public to scrutinize every year, and that's what this process is about. And as I mentioned, this information has been available on our website and other ways, and we wanted to draw attention to this by the hearing tonight.
Thank you, City Manager. Any questions or comments from council? All right, hearing none from the audience, none from council. Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. I will go ahead and close this hearing at this time at 6:07. Do I need a roll call for that? No? Okay. All right, so moving on to item I, Considerations. Number one, consideration of the city's public transit fares. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Marcus Cox, our manager for our transit system, for providing some very detailed background, and I borrow liberally from his background because I thought it was important for those people just to have time maybe to read the summary every couple weeks to know how we charge, what we charge for, for both our fixed route and paratransit services. And I also wanted people to know that since mid-March in 2020, our fares have been suspended for all of our fixed route and paratransit services. And the question for you tonight is, shall we reinstitute those? And the background, as you know from having a chance to peruse it, describes how other communities have proceeded to reinstitute those fees. In our case, the fees do not make up but a very small, minute fraction of the overall operating expenses for each fiscal year. Senior citizens, individuals with disabilities, K-12 students pay a reduced fare of 25 cents when they jump on one of these buses. The general public otherwise pays 50 cents. Students ride at the time for free, but they're making contributions through fees that they pay to NIU, and NIU collects an agreed amount of money that we have via an intergovernmental agreement and sends that money to us once a year as their contribution to our transit system. And the city transit staff estimate, just for the record, that 70% of our fixed route passengers are NIU students. The remaining 30% are residents or guests of our urbanized area. So in the COVID year, we collected just under $20,000 in fare revenue. This is a multimillion-dollar operation, as you know. On a normal year, we would have collected somewhere around $80,000, and we have projected that that might be the case in 2021. But this revenue represents about 2% of the total annual revenues that are needed. So what have we been spending the money on? We've been spending it on, I guess you would call them, one-off expenditures. We bought a transit vehicle. Otherwise, our employees were using their own vehicles. That was about a year ago. Other purposes that have been served in recent years, we've paid for the annual audit of our transit system, some public outreach, some minor purchases for advertising and the like. So our recommendation to you, since the system only has about $20,000, a little under $25,000 left in those fares, it doesn't, and we're not going to get, well, we might get twice that before the end of the fiscal year. We're recommending that we continue the suspension of fares through the end of this year, and by that point, we feel that we will be able to charge again, that it won't be through all of the difficulties and challenges that have been posed by COVID. But we, I think we'll be in a better position to start charging again, and the amount that we'll charge at that point, I presume will be about the same unless the council wants to review the actual fare schedule. So that's our recommendation to you. Stick with what we have been doing for the last year, suspending fares, and revisit this toward the end of the calendar year.
Thank you, City Manager. Questions or comments, council? Alderman Perkins?
Have you, has anyone, the data for other communities is great stuff. Has anyone talked to them on their thought process? Because looking at the other transit agencies in the state, there are only two that aren't charging.
I'd be stepping on Marcus's toes if I talked to him, so I'm gonna let...
Evening, Marcus.
Yeah, good evening. So I guess the best way to explain it is the way that DeKalb is set up is a little unique. The other agencies, most of which you see listed as reinstating the fares, rely somewhat heavily on that revenue that is incurred from those fares. So it was something that was kind of a, Moline was the first one to institute it back in July of last year, and then kind of everyone else said, all right, let's just wait till we get through 2020 and see how this goes. But overall, everyone, Champaign is really also the big one that we focused a lot of our, what are, how are they proceeding? And they've been very cautious, and they take in nearly $5 million a year in fare revenue. So it's just been kind of one of those things where people have said, what's best for us? But a lot of large urban transit agencies have, Kansas City, LA, are looking at maintaining somewhat of a fare-free status to see what this does, because it's been shown that, okay, we can handle this, but how do we do this going forward?
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? No? City Manager, you're just looking for some head nods, right?
Yes, at this point.
So we're all good with suspending the fares until December 31st? That's what I heard? Okay.
So to clarify, then, going into 2020, next year, will be, the fares will go back in, or we're gonna have to reconsider?
We should probably bring you a report. Where are we? And I think we'll probably recommend at that point that we go back into some fares, and if you had any thoughts about whether the fare structure needs to be reviewed, we could do it at that time as well. But I can assure you, Marcus and I will spin that up sometime in December for you to review.
Okay. Good.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Marcus. And I'd be remiss to not let everyone in the audience know, at some point, if you've heard what you came here for, by all means, you can leave. It's not disrespectful at all, so we don't anticipate everyone staying around for the whole meeting, as riveting as they can be. All right, moving on to resolutions. Item J, and then moving to item number one, Resolution 2021-052, authorizing a restaurant/bar liquor license for Jerk Fusion Sports Bar &amp; Grill at 9:30 Pappas Drive. I take a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager?
I was gonna ask if I can go the home run derbies tonight. I'm kind of interested in it. Probably not. Okay, never mind.
Sorry.
Yeah, as shown here, we have a new owner, and so we have to go through the process of council approval, and their applications are in order, and also we observe what they've done at the state level, and we feel comfortable recommending them to you at this point.
Council? All right, roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. All right, resolutions, item number two, Resolution 2021-053, authorizing a contract with ICMA-TV in the amount of $22,500 to produce a film about the city of DeKalb for a nationwide audience. I would take a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager?
This may be a first. It's the first time I know, and I can remember, that I didn't have some detailed background for an item that's on your agenda. I take that seriously and pride myself on that. But there's a phone call that I got on Friday afternoon, and that prompted the need to come before you and to walk this in, as you were, as it were. There is an opportunity, if you wish to take it up, to have a film done on DeKalb. We were invited by the International City County Management Association, and they have an annual conference in early October of this year, and last year, that conference was entirely virtual, and I don't know if they were doing, I think they were still doing this, but not as, probably as aggressively. But what they do every year is they select a number of cities, big, medium-sized, and small. We consider a small city, speaking nationally. This is an organization that represents professional managers in public administration, not just city managers, but other managers, transit managers, and so forth. They also have an international component to them. I don't think they touch all nation-states, but they have, if you go on the website, you can see that they have a pretty wide breadth of membership. And they, in their annual conference, they run five-minute videos of maybe a half a dozen cities that they select with criteria that they come up with. This isn't something we apply for. They just called us and said, we find DeKalb interesting, and particularly in some ways, in how you are proceeding to rejuvenate the downtown area, and they also noted our focus on economic development. So we had some conversation, and they connected me with the producer of these films, and they have vetted this company over the years. This company's been doing most of their work since 2006. They have a one rate for big cities, little cities, in-between cities, and it's $22,500. There's no negotiation of that. It's, that's, if you want to play, that's what we do. They run the film that they do in a continuous loop through the three or four days of the convention, and also in the convention-approved hotels and motels. It's in Portland, Oregon this year. We don't go. We're not even members of the ICMA. We are members of the ILCMA, which is the state chapter of the national organization, the Illinois City Management Association, and pay modest dues to that. We're not members because they're pretty stiff dues. So what do we get from this? I think the biggest thing, oh, by the way, we get the video. It probably has a shelf life of a couple of years. We're changing pretty quickly. We're developing pretty quickly, and so it would have a limited shelf life. But we could also carve it up. We get full rights to it once it's done. And they come in with a crew, a pretty good-sized crew. I'm guessing about the size of the crew that was involved with us prior to the Facebook announcement. And then they go off, and they have about eight to 10 hours of filming. They do some B-roll around the community. They interview people in the community, as well as city officials and other governmental officials. And they distill it down to the five minutes. The, I think one of the main benefits of this is not what we do with it after the fact, but because this is the convention, if you want to highlight, or if you want to see what's happening in nation cities or international cities, and you're a big business, corporate entity, they have their own large booths, and of course, for their own purposes, but also they're getting probably till they're sick of it, this continuous roll, and oh, there's DeKalb again, another five minutes of DeKalb, you know, look at your watch. But they'll know about us. And not everybody knows about us. Certainly, companies looking to come here and relocate are doing their homework, and they're looking at our website. But what happens before that? Before they know that we're on the map and that we exist and what we're doing here? That's an open question. I thought it would be helpful in that way. And so I proposed it to you, and there's really not anything more I can say, except that I thought it might be worth the gambit.
Council, questions, comments? Alderman Verbic?
I see this as a component of a marketing plan. So you read about this opportunity. How can that spin out to other opportunities for the city of DeKalb to proceed with a marketing plan? What is that plan? I think it would be an interesting discussion amongst us all with what we believe are the best opportunities for our tax dollars to promote all the great things going on in DeKalb. So...
That was my only comment, yeah. Alderman Larson?
I think just from what City Manager was saying, is, you know, around our area, maybe even in the state, we're getting some buzz with Facebook and everything, but to get on that national plane where people or other companies, we need to move. We're not sure where. We've got to start looking. To have us out there in like a target-rich environment, it's not just the tape we're getting to use for our own personal use. It's that thing that, you know, priceless, to get it into the right market, to get it into the people that are looking or listening for that. I think it'd be worth it. I would definitely vote yes.
Alderman Smith?
Bill, do we have control over what they should, or do they just come in and what, are they, do they have any focus points?
So in this sense, they, I looked on their website and saw some of the work they've been doing over recent years. In some cases, the community video looks like a travel log. Come to us. We've got lakes and water skiing. We've got rodeos and whatever else. And when I had the conversation, I asked what they wanted to do. Well, we do this, we do that. I said, well, I would want to focus on the DeKalb story, which is unique, I thought. And there are three pieces of that. One, they've already identified. It's common, commonplace in most of these. That's, what are you doing to develop and grow your community? And I mentioned Facebook. They didn't know we had Facebook, and we didn't, they didn't know we had Ferrari. So there was plenty that we could have, we could certainly film there. But the other thing I thought was just as important was community development, and what we're doing with a sense of belonging, and what we're doing uniquely in this community and have been doing, particularly for the last year, in trying to engage and connect rather than, and force and constrain. And I said, I thought we had a good story there, and I sent something along, which was accepted and appreciated. And then the downtown, I said, that's a great focus. And every city in this, in our country, around the world, wrestles with what is our identity geographically, spatially, visually, in addition to the, you know, what are we, how are we identified as a people and as a community? And we have been doing that for a while now, and we are reaching beyond our comfort levels to do some new things. So I thought, rather than a travel log, we could do something that would ignite more interest. And it doesn't make sense if we're just asking people to talk about putting our toes in the kish and all that. That's wonderful stuff, but it's, you know, it's not enough. So in answer to your question, that, I think, makes it worth our while. And it's something you would want to look at later, and we could show, and others could show, and you could play it at the Egyptian or whatever, you know, for people. So. But it's a price tag. I, as Mike said, I mean, we had $10,000 in our budget for the whole organization, for the whole year, to do, quote, "marketing," and marketing turned out to be, those ended up to be public notices. We had nowhere else to pay for them. So there's really no marketing budget. So we'd have, the money will come out of, would have to come out of Fund 400 under developmental services, which it is in a sense.
Well, what we're getting out of this is not only national, but international coverage, which I think we've never, I think we all would agree, never truly had, and now's our chance. I think it's well worth the money. I've always been after, let's market us, market the airport, et cetera. I think it's interesting they didn't know about Facebook, and I'm sure that's going to pique their interest a lot, which I think will benefit us and the city. So personally, I think it's money extremely well spent.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Perkins?
So timing with this is probably going to be next six weeks.
It's quick. Yeah, it's quick.
It's pretty rapid.
They want to be done by the end of August, and so that means they come in sometime early to mid-August and race through. Hence bringing it to you tonight rather than waiting until the 26th.
Any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call?
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You all are awesome, by the way, to show the vision and do that. All right, item K, ordinances, second reading, none. Item L, ordinances, first reading. Item number one, ordinance 2021-023, amending the fiscal year-end December 31st, 2021 budget. I would take a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager?
Well, a lot of detail here, in the interest of transparency. I thought that was important, and I thank Josh Bol for working with me on this. We're talking about doing a couple things here. One, we wanted to formally amend our fiscal year budget to identify a new fund, Fund 110, which is to be the repository of federal monies coming to us through the ARP program. As I mentioned one of the last meetings, we've done it within our software, but it doesn't mean it exists. It doesn't exist until you say it exists as part of the budget. So that's one of the first parts. And then another thing, I wanted to show you how, for now, we have parked some of that money, which we've already received in different categories. And I'm just gonna run through this real quickly, and we can have a conversation and do a Q&amp;A. So that's one piece of it. Another piece of it, and a longer piece, is to walk through particularly the general fund. I haven't done it in this iteration of my city management, but I have more often than not, in years gone by, wanted at mid-year to kind of spritz up any variations, significant variations, revenue or spending, to reflect decisions that the council has made. So when you get into the last, the third quarter, especially as we're beginning to think about the next fiscal budget, we know exactly, you'll see a document that shows you exactly where, well, pretty darn close, certainly closer than we were six months ago, two quarters ago. Also, things have moved so quickly. When we put together the current budget, we didn't know about an ARP. We knew about the CARES Act, which was nice, and we could count on some of that. We knew about the CARES Act, which was nice and we could count on some of that. But we didn't know would the pandemic continue to rage as it was through the holidays? And by the way, the budget was done and printed and accepted before the holidays, the, at least the Christmas holidays. And so we were out of whack and we were ultra-conservative in some of the revenue projections, which I'm happy to say were understated. And so now I think we should, we should say what we have, let the public see. And also in some spending, there were some additional spending to address real needs. We had a little bit more to spend on the workers' comp and life. Oh, the insurance is an example and a few other things. Also, the general fund now is in a position to shift some money out to another fund or two. And we could get into the details of that, but you've seen that in the background, in the highlighted charts. And then there are some minor cleanups in the water fund, the motor fuel tax fund and the capital equipment replacement fund, that's where the vehicles are. We talked about this at the audit conversation last two weeks ago, where now the Gatsby rule requires that we claim one time the value of all of these lease contracts that we've taken on, the full value rather than just what we're paying for the year. So we expense them and we show the revenue. So that had to be recreated in our budget, even though it's going to be shown in the, in next year's audit. So then the comp I mentioned and the health insurance, finally, not a major difference. The net change was $3,500, but it's an important fund, not only to the budget as a whole, but to our organization's employees who obviously participate in the health insurance plan. So that's it. I'm happy to, to answer any questions. Overall, we're, we have an excess of revenues over expenditures across the whole budget, all funds, general fund and not including the new fund of just under $2.4 million. Of that, just a little over $2.1 million was in the general fund to the good. And the federal money is not included in that because I wanted to show what the natural growth was or not growth in the general fund. So that's where we are. It's good news to report. Happy not to be reporting the reverse of that.
All right, thanks, City Manager. Any questions from counsel, comments? I am, yes. Oh, sorry, Alderman Verbeck. I'm sorry.
Thanks to all for the update. This is great to track and is really helpful throughout the year, so thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think Alderwoman Larson.
Do we have like a set limit of what you'd want to run in excess before we move it other places in the general fund or does, can that just grow?
One marker for the council, which has been important historically, is how, what the minimum of our reserve would be.
Okay.
And that's 25% of the current year's projected expenditures. So we're in excess of that right now. We were when we approved the budget. How much, because I'm going to be, excuse me. I'll be bringing back in the meetings following this meeting, specific ways you might want to spend that federal money. It'll be a slow rollout each time I bring something. As I mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago, we're going to talk about it and see if this is the best and highest use. And when that money comes in, then we're going to see, obviously, we're starting to, we've, we will be filling some booths that have been drained a little bit during COVID and then we're going to be sending money out to, for other purposes, to the community and to other organizations. So because we are the repository of the federal money. There will be a point probably when we get to the joint meeting, which is only about a month away, of the FAC, the Finance Advisory Committee and the council where we project where we will need to be next year. This year, we also are, I'll say enjoying, it's, it's a, maybe not the right phrase, but remember the council scooped and tossed $1.8 million out of our budget. So as excited as I am about the $2.3 million to the good, if it had been any other year, $1.8 million would have carved into that very deeply. And then the half million that was left, we also have some other obligations such as our, this year, we, we, well, we actually, we abated the library bond payment, but that's coming back into the budget probably next year. So, you know, we're doing pretty good. We survived COVID and shored up our revenues and limited our expenses. So I think it's not going to look quite as rosy when we get to mid-August. Give me, give me a month to mess with it and I'll come back. Okay?
I could just see some of my constituents going, well, how much, how much would it, could it get to? So, so it's high now, bills will come, things will change and.
A bigger discussion, and I don't want to predate, when we get to the levy, we will be able to project out over the next couple of years where we think we will be, where we think the other taxing bodies are going to be. That's a big discussion about who gets to hold the tax dollars? Does the property owner get to hold a little more back? While we still meet our need, meet our requirements and so forth? So that's a, it's not a good guys, bad guys. That's, that's a very, I think, instructive, should be an energetic conversation across the whole community, every taxing body, especially the city.
Thank you.
And I agree, that'll be an exciting time when all of us taxing bodies, with the revenue that we're seeing from Facebook and Ferrara and all the opportunity, how can we really make good decisions for the community as a whole? And that's going to be beyond just the city. We'll be a cog in that wheel. But yeah, all those taxing bodies got to come forward and make those adjustments hopefully. All right, any other questions or comments? I'm looking at you, Alderman Verbeck. All right. First, I got to say, great job to counsel. You know, I'm coming in after you guys already made all the hard decisions and got us to this point. So kudos to all of you and the leadership that you showed to get us to this point, to be so financially stable. Definitely kudos to City Manager Nicholas and your staff. I know people made a lot of hard choices during that time, but they were necessary choices and it got us to the point that we're at right now. So that's fantastic. And then also kudos to the detail that you gave us in this background material. I mean, I think that's why you're not getting a lot of questions. So much of it was already laid out before us and answered. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number two, ordinance. Roll call, roll call. Dang, I was on a roll. I almost had it.
And just before we do, could I mention that it would be helpful to us and particularly our two accounts, if we can do this on second reading tonight? So we can, we can do the cleanup.
So first I have to have a roll call on the first reading.
Yes.
And then a motion for second reading, right? All right. So I'll take a roll call.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
All right, and then I would take a motion to waive second reading.
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
That was moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith. Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Moving on to item number two, ordinance 2021-024, authorizing a zoning map amendment from the RC-1 Residential Conservation District to the PDC-C Plan Development Commercial District and approval of a preliminary and final development plan for 304 North 10th Street. I would take a motion to bring that to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The petitioner, Elias Ramos.
How'd I do?
Okay. Is in the audience tonight. He and his family are proposing to make a nice, very nice oasis out of a property that is well over 100 years old and built sometime probably before the First World War, maybe? In the early 1900s. Served a number of purposes, some commercial, some residential back in the railroad days. There were, you know, places to go to buy food or have a drink or whatever. And it, for a while, kind of fell onto some hard times, but this, he and his family have owned this for a little while now and have already started upgrading it. And if you are on North 10th Street sometime, you can see the work that's being done, the new siding and so forth. But to take a property that was first built before there was modern zoning and then try to allow for a, some sustainable economic use, it's a little tricky. They are, I think, doing the best possible with this property. They're creating some parking. It's not perfect, but it's darn close to what we, the minimum we require. And so one of the things that the Plan Commission had a look at when they, when they took this on and with our staff and I thank Dan Olson for spending a lot of time on this, was what, what needs to be done in terms of reasonable waivers to the conventional zoning that we have and our Unified Development Ordinance, our UDO, defines those rules. So in your background, you can see that what is proposed is the possibility of having the about 1,550 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. And also that includes some offices and a gift shop and convenience store and then two, two-bedroom apartment units on the second floor. And there's a small addition to the second story also for family use. And so there's a rule that says you can't have a planned development of less than two acres. We're looking for relief from that. This is only .2 acres, so, but there's a lot packed in there, but it can be done, we feel, and the Plan Commission felt likewise. And this is not the first time we've sought that waiver. Cornerstone, DeKalb, Plaza DeKalb, Pizza Hut, other projects have been given that allowance if it seemed like a decent reuse or redevelopment. There are some buffer requirements. If there was plenty of room, you, there's, because of that commercial on the first floor, you might have some, some nice landscape buffering, maybe a fence, maybe a combination of the two, a berm. There's no room for that. The building's built right up to the sidewalk. And so looking for some relief from that. Off-street parking, as I mentioned earlier, there, there's a total of 11 parking spaces required. Looks like we're going to get 10. It's real close. It's a very economical use of the land area around the building. And then the setback, if we were building new, there'd be a 10-foot setback for the parking in the front yard, but it's just not going to make it, so we're looking for a waiver there. Planning and Zoning Commission considered these waivers, considered the essential rezoning petition to the planned development and recommended for your consideration all of these waivers by a vote of five to zero. And we ask that you approve the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Mr. Ramos is also interested in a second reading tonight so he can really dig in while the weather is good to the remodeling and redevelopment.
Thank you, City Manager. Counsel, questions, comments? Oh, Alderman Smith. I'm getting there.
I, Bill, I'm behind this. I drive by Mr. Ramos's property every day. I remember what it used to look like. I remember the dance studio, et cetera. This is a great addition to the area. Thank you, Dan, for making it work. And I have to go with what the Planning Commission did. I mean, we have, I'm following their recommendation. They dove into what I think is very well in this case. And this variance is, I think, critical to the neighborhood. So I'm behind it 100%.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments? I would take roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
And I take a motion to waive second reading.
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Signor Ramos, gracias. Really appreciate your investment in this community.
Absolutely.
That, that whole area is becoming quite a hub of commerce, which is really cool to see. My old neighborhood, actually. All right, let's see here. What's that? Oh. How about item number three, ordinance 2021-025, amending the city's holiday schedule to recognize June 19th, Juneteenth, as an official paid employee holiday. I'd take a motion to bring it to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance builds on the proclamation that the mayor read at the top of the meeting and it amends our municipal code to create an additional paid holiday, hopefully to commemorate the meaning of Juneteenth in our history and for all the reasons that were cited in the proclamation. Holidays are a bargainable topic in our collective bargaining agreement, so your action tonight does not shoehorn this as a paid holiday into those agreements. There'll have to be negotiation. We plan to sit down and look forward to that opportunity with our bargaining groups. But we're not looking for a quid pro quo. Otherwise, it would diminish the purpose of what this is about. So there are other reasons why in a bargaining session you look at the different pros and cons to, from both sides. And we're not proposing that this becomes that kind of a football, that it stands on its own merits and it's hard to put a dollar amount on what this means in our community and around the country. So that's what's before you tonight and we recommend your approval.
Counsel? Alderwoman Morris?
I'm really pleased to see this come forward and the way that it's been expressed. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Perkins?
So a couple of clarifying points then. So really for the city, city has 12 paid holidays a year then, right? For the employees, if I read through the backup correctly.
It's actually 11.
11?
There's an, I think there's a list floating around out there that shows, I think in '22, is that a leap year? So it shows that the, I don't know.
But it's 11 or 12.
It's 11.
I guess my point is it's 11, 11-ish. Okay. So to me, there's a couple of issues here. One is the federal holiday list, you know, and basically every employer, every private sector company has the same business level decision. And the question is, is how many, how many holidays are we going to extend? What's the size of the benefit we're going to extend to our employees? And then that business takes those, that decision and determines which holidays we're going to give out. So to me, there's two issues. One is the number of holidays we're going to have and then where are they going to be? Because it looks, we're bundling all of that together.
Absolutely.
So a little more benchmarking than I did, too. And what I try to do is I try to compare what's happening in the private sector with what's happening in the public sector. So in a private sector, typically, private sector businesses have eight to 10 holidays. So what we're talking about here is taking what I think is already a generous benefit at 11 and bumping it to 12, correct? Okay.
We're actually, I see what you're saying. We're low for, for public, for some banking institutions, as you may know. We don't observe some of the holidays in February and March. And so some of them go to 13 already. And if we were looking to honor Chicago Cubs or, you know, something. So this is as essential as, I suppose, President's Day. It, we have a number of holidays that were one time religious, but are now not secularized. But, and then we have some memorializing sacrifices made in wars and also the founding of our country. and also the founding of our country. This one is as important as that. So, now you're talking to an American historian, so I'm going to tristle a little bit. So, in 1776, we, we, we had a very conservative revolutionary document that said that all men are created equal, right? But there wasn't a black person or a woman in the room, or a Latin person or anybody else. And it took all the way to the Civil War, and a lot of blood, to say that, damn it, what we meant was, all persons are created equal, not all persons, as long as you're da, 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 and on some property. And then it took us another year, 100 years beyond that, so it's, you know, it's 250 years, practically, to, to where we are now. And we're just now, and, and even now, the right to vote is, is threatened in, in some states. So, what I'm saying is, folks, it's time for us to honor everybody who has the same right to, to, to the, the civil rights that, that were part of that, of the founding fathers' intentions. And this is a small way to do that. And it says to people who have been outside of the club for a lot of years, that you are welcome, at least legally, and, and now we're saying professionally, we are going to take time, we're going to engage. Now, we can't make our employees go to a park or someplace and listen to speeches and have picnics and, and think about the, the meaning of this. You can't do that for July 4th, you can't do it for other things. But what I'm saying is, it's time we do. And the dialogue we've had in this country for the last year, and in this community for the last year, I think, tells us, maybe we're finally on the road to that discussion. And I want to be part of it as long as I'm here. So that's why I proposed that, we could have waited, we could have traded it off. I know there's been some, in some of the social media, people saying, hey, that's going to cost you $12,000 in overtime and all the rest of that. Boy, how do you put a price on what we're trying to do here? I, I think it's time, if we had to drop something, then drop one of those others. This belongs in our retinue of, of holidays. And that's what you're saying.
Yeah, so to sort of be clear, I'm very supportive of the holiday.
Yes, I know you are.
I'd, I'd absolutely agree with it.
But now we'd have to, we'd have to negotiate backwards to take things out.
That's, that's kind of it, because, you know, each, every business makes a decision what the holidays are going to be for their business.
I hear you.
Not, not every business selects Columbus Day, not every business selects Casimir Pulaski Day, or Veterans Day.
Right, right.
You know, the, the common ones that are selected are, what are there? Five or six that are pretty much slam dunks. You know, your, your New Years, the Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Christmas, Thanksgiving. Then the rest of them are open to some degree of discussion and the size of the benefit that we want to pass on to our employees, to our, to our public servants.
Well, the council can direct us otherwise on the, the list. I think this ordinance stands on, on its own merits, and it's not tonight or in the next couple of months that we could get done what, what might be an implication of, of doing some trading and so forth. It would take, you know, we'd have to reopen the contracts and so forth. And I thought, let's, let's make a statement now that we support this. The council directs us at the staff level when we go into collective bargaining and when we're dealing with other, other personnel benefits.
But now, all the positions aren't collectively bargained, though, right?
Well, the, most are.
By making this statement, this would impact the ones that are not collectively bargained, and it would set a benchmark, basically, for the, the rest of them.
Yeah. Yeah. Basically, it frees those people who aren't, aren't in the war zone, right? Just like 100 years ago.
Alderwoman Morris?
I think, to some degree, and I believe the City Manager hit on this, to trade it off for another holiday diminishes the value of the new holiday. It's to say that its significance is not, is just something that you can trade off. And so I think that that substantially diminishes the intrinsic value in the holiday, and I think that's part of the reason that we can't just trade it off. You know, there's a lot of symbolism involved here, there's a lot of deep, deep meaning the City Manager spoke to. I just think there's, you can't really put a price on it. And I think, you know, additionally, when we're looking at the difficult job market that we're in, you know, attracting employees is really challenging, and being aggressive in this sense is a really positive thing for the city, to be able to say that they offer this sort of thing. I think it'd be one thing if we're talking about a holiday that wasn't already sanctioned by the federal government. But the federal government has sanctioned this holiday, we are also a government body, and I think that as such, you know, given to Caesar what is Caesar's, right? We are affirming and confirming that we agree with the laws of our land and, and the positions of our federal government to some degree.
No other comments, questions? I love, we do have a fiduciary responsibility being up here, so I, I appreciate your comments, absolutely. And I know we're all behind, you know, having this ordinance go through, but we need to ask those questions. And you're right, maybe come negotiation time, we can have those conversations with some of those unions and, and see what might be able to be done. But I, I do agree with City Manager Nicholas, this is, one of those things is just too important. We need to, we need to recognize it, we need to back it, we need to show the leadership in our community for a holiday like this. All right. Hearing no more comments or questions, roll call.
Perkins.
No.
Verbic.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. With that, I would actually accept a motion for waiving second reading.
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It was moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
No.
Mayor Barnes. Mayor Barnes?
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor.
No worries, no worries. All right, with that, we are moving on to item number four, ordinance 2021-026, amending Chapter 51, traffic, Schedule A, one-way traffic, as it pertains to establishing one-way traffic on North 6th Street from East Lincoln Highway to Pine Street. I would take a motion to bring this to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager.
I think what I have described in the background conforms to what the council had directed me to bring back at the last meeting, to create a, a uniform one-way direction northerly from Lincoln Highway to Pine. However, in your background, bear with me, the oversight was, there was a clause in the existing ordinance that references an understanding made between the business at 545 East Lincoln Highway, which is McDonald's, with the ability to have their, one of their drive-through aisles exit on to North 6th Street and go either north or south, go south just a little ways to get to Lincoln Highway, but then you could proceed north. So, at your desk, and I think the city clerk has a copy of this as well.
I do not.
No, I'll give him my copy. The ordinance would read, City's corporate authorities hereby amend da, 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 as follows, North 6th Street, this is a one-way traffic section in the municipal code, between Pine Street and East Lincoln Highway northerly, and then here's the, the caveat, but excluding that portion at the intersection of North 6th Street and East Lincoln Highway, used as an exit from the establishment at 545 East Lincoln Highway. That's the language that was in the ordinance before, and I think we have to put that back, because the condition of the, of the McDonald's building there was that they would be able to have a second way out, and not a, a second way on the Lincoln Highway, but it could be tributary to Lincoln Highway.
First, comments, and then I've had questions, but comments, questions, and council? All right, so procedurally, City Manager, what, what, what do we got to do here?
And the, well, actually, what you have before you, the city turns up.
It's a new, it's a new ordinance.
It's a new ordinance, so what you have before you is, with the caveat that I just read, you could approve.
Yes, okay.
We threw out the old ordinance, it was on your agenda two weeks ago.
Okay. With that, oh, Alderman Smith.
Go ahead. I've talked to Zach about this. Zach, we've covered the businesses, everybody's on board, if I, you and I are on the same page with that, right?
Yes, during the initial survey in February this month, there was one business that was not in favor, but they have not reapproached regarding this new information, so.
But with this, there will be gaining quite a few parking spaces. I know, both for the 200 and 300 block, 300 block, well, both of them need it. I know that gets really crowded on both areas, so we will be picking up quite a few parking spots for them.
Yeah, the primary beneficiary is a 300 block, yeah, gain of at least 10 parking stalls. Coincidentally, the parking stalls on the 200 block are already striped diagonally for Northbound traffic, so it's basically just a shoo-in for them as far as that flow in parking, yeah.
That's answered all my questions, thank you.
Alderwoman Morris?
So my question is, they're happy with this, generally speaking, except for the one business that hasn't replied?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. No additional comments? Then, roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. So as far as, like, waiving second reading, you know, there's been some conversation about it out there, but we've, this is the second time, roughly, this has been before council. You know, I'm a big believer in letting people come out and speak on something that there might be some contention on, but we are at our second, second city council meeting discussing this and have heard nothing from the public. So, if you are all fine, I would take a motion to waive second reading and approve, but I'll leave it to council.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Discussion? Roll call.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. Fantastic. All right, moving on to item number M, reports and communications. I will start off with Alderwoman Morris.
No report.
Alderwoman Larson.
None here.
Alderman Smith.
Uh, no reports.
Alderman Perkins.
No report.
Alderman Verbic.
No report.
So for me, I've got a, I've got a few things. One, I gotta say, I'm new on the job, so I'm having to reach out to a lot of people, so I definitely got to say thanks to Chief Byrd. He's been great on a few things that I need to pass to him, so, Chief, I know you got a lot on your plate, and I always feel bad handing something to you, but there's times I just need to, so just thanks for being there for me. Marcus Cox, same. You know, you've been great, whenever I need you, you're there, so I just want to let you know that I greatly appreciate the time. The city attorneys, same thing. You know, I appreciate you two always being there when a question arises. Scott Zach, I've bugged you a bunch, you know, it's awesome, you're always there, and you are always there. Every event I go to, anything I go to, yep, there's Scott. So, you work really hard for the city and just wanted to say how much I appreciate it. I also wanted to just let you guys know, I was at, had a meeting with the Northern Illinois Food Bank, just learning about their organization and how they help out a lot of the food pantries within our community. And that's an amazing resource that we have available to us. They, they served over 100 million meals last year. I, I was, I was staggered by that. They have 200 employees, and I think 92% of all their contributions go directly to the people in need. So that was, that was just wonderful to sit down and have a conversation with them. There was an ice cream soul stroll Alderman, or Alderwoman Morris and I went to, as well as City Manager Nicholas. Chief Byrd was there, working the kids like a pro. Oh my gosh, you were awesome. But that was really cool for the new superintendent of schools to, to go out into the community. We did four different stops. I was only able to make the one on 10th Street and then the one in University Village. But she got to introduce herself, and many of us, and City Manager Nicholas as well, to the community, and just had a lot of great conversations with our community. Did a golf outing with the DeKalb Police Department. My partner was Josh Bolt over there. We did not carry the team in any way, shape, or form, but it was really cool to spend some time out there with our boys in blue, in a fundraiser for the Police Benevolent Association, right?
Correct.
Beautiful, yes. That was a great, great outing. And then, oh, I got to meet Dawn and her team over at City Hall, and it was just wonderful getting to know everyone. So I'm, I'm going around as much as I can to meet as many people as possible and trying to stay busy. And the last thing, I got to share a funny thing with you. I had to present the colors at Let's Dance, which is a swing dance thing on Sunday, Sunday?